The City of Clayton Planning Commission. Ms. Sim, can we please call roll for attendance?
Mr. Bills?
Here.
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Palace? And Ms. Pritchett?
Here.
All right, I'd like to, um, I'll go through the process as we go through these meetings, but I will tell you upfront here that the hearing for the Redwood Project has been tabled until next month. The applicant has requested that. They've got a family issue they need to deal with, so they were not able to be here tonight. So if there's anyone that was here purposely, mainly for that hearing, we will not be talking about it tonight. Okay, for tonight's meeting, we have quite a few members of the public that are interested in the agenda items. I'd like to take some time to review the meeting procedures. I will start by asking all members of the public to please remain quiet during the meeting. You will be given an opportunity, if you would like, to come to the podium and make your comments and concerns known to the Planning Commission, but I ask that you refrain from any outspoken during the discussion going on. When we get to the new business, I'll ask Mr. Dorman to make the staff presentation of the agenda item. After the presentation, I'll ask the applicant to make a presentation to add anything to what the staff presented. And then after the applicant has started, completed their presentation, I'll ask the Planning Commission if they have any initial questions for staff or the applicant. Once the commission has made initial questions to staff and applicant, I will ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment. So once that period is started, we will be inviting any member of the public, one at a time, to make a comment for or against the proposed application. Each person will have up to three minutes to make their comments, and I will be keeping the time and will have to cut it off when you get to your allotted time. In the interest of saving time, I will ask that no duplicant comments are made. When it is your turn to speak, please come to the podium, turn on the microphone, state your name and address of your residence for the record, and then you can make your comment to the Planning Commission. We ask that you do not direct comments or specifically ask a question of the staff or the applicant. The purpose of the public comment period is to help Planning Commission understand the public's concerns, which will help us when we get to the end of the hearing and be making a recommendation to City Council to, one of three things, to approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove the application. Once the public comments have been received, I'll ask Planning Commission for a motion to close the public comment period. And once that period is closed, I'll ask the applicant if they'd like to respond to any of the comments received by the public. Once the applicant has finished responding to comments received by the public, I'll ask Planning Commission members, one at a time, if they have any questions for the staff or the applicant. Once each member of the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to ask their questions, I will call for a motion from the Planning Commission for one of the following recommendations to City Council. Again, it's one of three options: approve the application as submitted, approve with conditions, or disapprove the application. So once a motion has been made and received, a second, I'll ask Ms. Sim to please call the roll on the motion. If a motion has three EAs and the motion carries, if we receive less than three EAs, which is a majority of the vote, I'll be asking for a new motion that will follow the same process. This will proceed until Planning Commission is able to pass a motion with a majority vote, as it is our responsibility to make a recommendation, one way or the other, to council. Thank you all for your interest in the agenda items before us tonight, and thank you in advance for following these rules. I've set out them, set them out tonight. For those in the public who wish to speak tonight for or against the agenda item, I need to administer the speech oath.[284.45][284.45](laughter) So please, anyone that wants to speak from the public, please raise your right hand as you listen to the oath, and if you agree to the oath, signify by saying "I do" when prompted. All right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to the commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay. At this time, you should have all read the minutes for the meeting from April 26th. Does anybody have any suggested changes to the minutes of the April 26th meeting?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the minutes as written.
Second, Mr. Gardner.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Sim, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So the item that's on our agenda for tonight is PC 21-04, zoning district change and preliminary subdivision plan, northwest corner of Westbrook and Union Roads, Hunter's Path. So Seth, you want to present the case here?
Well, thank you, President Bills, Planning Commission members. Good evening. So to introduce the application, the applicant is DDC Management LLC. They've submitted a two-part application for Planning Commission's consideration and recommendation to City Council. Proposed zoning district change at the northwest corner of Westbrook Road and Union Road from R3, which is our suburban residential district, to PD1, which is our planned district residential. The proposed preliminary development plan is for a single-family residential subdivision. I've listed the parcel that's involved. The property has an overall acreage of 39.47. Next slide. I've provided an aerial of the surrounding area with the current zonings for each of the property. Kind of in the center at the bottom is the subject property. It's zoned R3, and you'll see that the properties surrounding it, including the Bayberry Trail subdivision to the north, is also zoned R3. As you cross Union Road, there is a PD3, which is a planned district for business, and there's also office service to the east of Union Road. Next slide. This, again, is the subject property a little closer in, 39.47 acres. And again, that's at the northwest corner of Westbrook and Union. Next slide. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the zoning district change. Again, it's for a total area of 39.47 acres. The zone change request is from R3 to PD1. Current zoning, R3 permits single-family dwellings, adult family homes and care facilities. Conditionally permitted uses include public parks and recreation, non-commercial recreation, educational institutions, halfway houses, and secondary dwellings. In order for a conditional use to be approved, it would have to obtain approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's what we mean by conditionally permitted. The proposed zoning, though, is PD1, which is a planned district for residential. Our code states that in PD1's residential and recreational uses are permitted. Any development in a planned district, PD1, is subject to Planning Commission and City Council approval of a preliminary and final development plan. The preliminary plan is before us tonight. The final development plan would be submitted for your review and recommendation if City Council ultimately approves the zoning district change in the preliminary development plan. Next slide, please. So I'd like to talk about the preliminary development plan. This is a summary of the proposed Hunter's Path subdivision. The applicant proposes to construct 125 single-family homes on the 39 acres. There is a 30-foot buffer proposed for the entire east property boundary, which includes two acres owned by Amanda Austin, whose property will be surrounded by the proposed subdivision, as you can kind of see on the aerials that we've shown tonight. Primary access will come from a new access point on Westbrook Road and proposed connection via Fall Gold Drive to the Bayberry Trail subdivision. Utilities are at or near the proposed site and would be available to tie in for existing public infrastructure. The sanitary sewer I've noted up there would need to be extended approximately 710 feet from the west. New infrastructure with this development that's proposed would also include streets, sidewalks on both sides of the interior streets, and a multi-use path along the Westbrook Road frontage. Neighborhood amenities for Hunter's Path would include a centrally located neighborhood park and four stormwater retention ponds that would also have some passive open space around them. Next slide. I look at, I start by looking at Plan Clayton for guidance. Plan Clayton is our comprehensive plan for the City of Clayton. This particular corner, as you can see on the slide, is designated for single-family homes, so it's kind of the future or regulating land use plan, and we show it for single-family homes. Next slide. The planning and zoning code also provides this guidance. I've listed a number of chapters that relate to the requests before us tonight. I've summarized pertinent sections of those chapters that apply to this application in your staff reports. They offer guidance for design and development standards, but ultimately, in a planned development district, which is proposed, the final development plan that is approved, both by Planning Commission and City Council, becomes the design and development standards for the proposed project. Next slide. So what are the next steps? So after Planning Commission makes a recommendation to City Council this evening, City Council will hold a public hearing and make a final determination on the zoning district change and the preliminary subdivision plan. So if that's approved, DDC, the applicant, would then be able to submit for their final subdivision plan approval. Again, this application, the final development plan or subdivision plan, would require public hearings with both Planning Commission and City Council, so it'll follow the same process as we're starting tonight. The final subdivision plan submitted will require some additional information that we don't have with the preliminary, such as a traffic study. This would consider the impact of the development on the area roads, and will make recommendation on road improvements to address the impact of the development. The development plan set, which is really kind of the full engineering for the project, will include details on utilities, grading, stormwater and drainage, building architecture, or at least what the homes are projected to look like and feel like, and also the landscaping for the project. The final plat, then, finally, would also need to be submitted for Planning Commission and City Council review and approval prior to the plans being submitted for individual homes. And so that would come before they would submit for a zoning certificate and for the building permit. Next slide. So after evaluating the applicant's request, we recommend that the Planning Commission make a motion to recommend approval of the zoning district change from R3 to PD1 and the preliminary subdivision plan as submitted. Having said that, in the staff report, I've identified 23 items that we would ask the applicant to address in the final subdivision plan, should they obtain approval for the zoning district change and for the preliminary plan. And that's all I have tonight. I'll put up, next slide, please. I'll just put up a copy of the preliminary development plan for the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Does the applicant have a presentation they'd like to make?
Good evening. I'm Ryan Reed with DDC Management. Thank you for having us here tonight. I don't have anything formally prepared. I think Seth did an outstanding job summarizing our development. You know, we're really proud of this development and the collaboration we've had with the city on this to date. We think that we've incorporated a lot of the things that the city's looking for that are outlined in their Plan Clayton, and we feel that this proposed development addresses all of those key features that are outlined there. To what Seth mentioned on the staff recommendations, the 23 items, I'd like to add that we've reviewed that and we're in agreement with those, and those would be updated per those specific comments at our next step in the phase. I don't have anything specifically more to add, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, so the 23 items, since you guys are the developer for this, it'd be nice to hear what items we're talking about opposed to what Seth said.
Let me just ask a question here, Mr. Dorman. These 23 items, would, they're not, are they required as part of the preliminary submission or are they required in the final?
Those are items that we've identified that we'd like to be addressed in the final plan.
You want to walk through those? Okay. So, should I just go one by one, then? Breeze, yeah, breeze through it. So the first one is an exhibit showing the turning radius for the fire station, so we are building the community per the city guidelines, so we're happy to do that. A hydrology report showing the ponds are sufficient for a number of depths that will come with final engineering. Pond depths, that will be part of the final engineering process. Labeling area of the normal pool for each proposed retention pond, that will be part of the final engineering. This plan set, provide a construction plan showing proposed entrances, construction entrances, and temporary sediment basins, that will be part of the final development plan and construction drawings. One thing to note there, most of the temporary sediment basins will be in the same location as the proposed basins on here. Item six, verify the intersection of Street A and Westbrook meets city site distance requirements. We will incorporate that. Item seven, public street width will meet the city's current standards. Currently, it is proposed to have a 27-foot width. The staff comment is to go to 29-foot width, and so we will incorporate that. Plan to show right-of-way or half-right-of-way dimensions for Westbrook and Union, so we will include that dimension. The right-of-way of Westbrook will need to be increased to accommodate the 10-foot multi-use path out front, so we will include the multi-use path out front in the right-of-way. Fire hydrant spacing is 300 feet. We will incorporate that. Provide a copy of any plan review comments received from utilities and governing agencies, so we will reach out to the respective authorities and get those letters. Provide a copy of the geotech, that's completed, so we can provide that. Copy of the traffic study, that is also completed, so we can provide that. Diameter for proposed utilities, that will be part of the final engineering plan set. Update calculations for open space on the title sheet. I think we just had a miscalculation on there and a typo, so we'll update that. In fact, it's larger than what is represented on the preliminary development plan before you. And then there's a couple note items on the title sheet, just for correction. Item 16, correct note three where we note that Clayton, you know, it's city and water of Clayton, but we know that that's not the case, so we'll update that. Note number five, in reference to the ponds, applicant should note the city will require fountains or aerators, so we will have those in all of the ponds. Item 18, note seven, all streets and multi-use paths are to be public facilities and constructed to current Clayton standards. We'll throw that note on there. Item 19, note eight, delete the note until traffic study has been reviewed and completed, so we'll do that. Item 20, note 11, correct the proposed zoning from PD to the PD-1. Item 21, let's see, typical 52-foot layout, correct with a sidewalk to five feet from four feet, so we will do that. Item 22, sheet three, the multi-use patch shall be 10 feet wide instead of six on the proposed, and we're okay with that. We'll incorporate that. And then the last item here, all plan sheets shall reflect the current city standards for sidewalk and multi-use path, so we will include that.
I'm good, thanks.
Mr. Gardner, do you have any questions? Ms. Pritchett?
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like a motion to open up the floor to public comment.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Gardner.
So Ms. Sim, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So I'd like to, again, just briefly go over the public comment rules. Each speaker will have three minutes to make comments, and if your comment has been made by a previous speaker, please do not replicate comments, just in the interest of time, and direct your comment to the Planning Commission and not directly to the applicant or the staff. They'll have a chance to respond to your comment after the public session's closed. So who, has anybody signed up? Is that what, Mr. Dorman, is that your process for public comment?
Yes, he's getting the sign-up sheet. There may be folks that were here for the Redwood Project, so I guess what I would do is invite members up, unless they've identified what project they're here for, but otherwise, just invite folks to come up.
So anyone that wants to speak to this project, stand up and come to the podium?
Yes, my name is Al Humble. I live at 5770 Summersweet Drive. My biggest question is, is there going to be a buffer from the houses from Summersweet back to this new development? I've been taking care of land behind my house for the last 26 years, or, I'm sorry, last 30 years of 26 feet. I've been mowing it, I've been paying for the fertilizer, I've been trimming the shrubs and everything, and I cannot get an answer from anybody on if I can buy this land or if it's going to be in the buffer, or what's going to be happening with it.
Can you tell me exactly where that is?
It's right on the corner of Summersweet and Union Road. It'd be on the, uh, I don't have a pointer. All right, if you look here, oops, on Union Road and go up to Summersweet, my house is the first house on the left-hand side.
I can't answer that question, but we'll have it addressed before we're meeting's over.
I'd appreciate it, because I've been trying to get ahold of Mr. Davis, and I can't get any satisfaction out of him. Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak?
All right, I'm Bill Sider at 5902 Mount Royal Drive, and I'd just like to echo the same kind of concerns that Al has, except for we're on Mount Royal Drive. And right now, your plan has green space that would affect our particular property, but, you know, there's a pretty good stand of trees that have grown over several decades and all kinds of wild understory plants, wildflowers and stuff like that, that we've kind of cared for, looked for, and, you know, with ash trees falling and stuff, we've maintained all that and cleared that out. You can see it from the satellite pictures, what we've done. And I'm just concerned that those trees just aren't stripped away, you know, and replaced with grass or something. And the other concern is, you know, I'm sure you're going to address it with your studies, but, you know, all the runoff caused by, you know, all the additional hard surfaces, you know, we've got a detention pond that is an ongoing concern for us. It's functional, but sometime it's going to need some maintenance, and one of our neighbors has been mowing that property on her end, but that's another topic. But we're just concerned that that won't be adversely affected by what happens here. And I like the idea that you're going to put fountains and aeration in the ponds, since they're going to retain water. And the last thing is, it looks like Fall Gold is now going to be kind of a pathway to, a throughway all the way out to Westbrook, and, you know, all the concerns that extra traffic brings with that. And that kind of summarizes, I think, what we're worried about. Oh, yeah, and we'll just have a homeowners' association. We're in an area with a defunct homeowners' association, concerns about that. Yeah, that's the question. Who will maintain that pond?
Okay, we'll find out.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? If there's no other public comment, then I'll ask for a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second, Ms. Gardner.
Ms. Sim, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So at this time, if the applicant would please return to the podium and address anything they'd like to, any of the questions and comments that they can?
Yep. Thank you for your comments. You know, we get a lot of these comments all the time, so I'll do my best to address them. I think the HOA part might hit on a few of them, so we will have an HOA for this community that we're in charge of. And that HOA won't be in charge of maintaining all of the ponds, mowing all of the green space, and caring for the monuments and landscaping at the entrance. So we will be maintaining that. As you see, Mr. Humble, Humble, in that top right corner where that pond is there, where your home is, that is HOA space that we will be maintaining from there. And then, Bill, to your point about the trees, you know, we know that there's an existing tree line there, and we really want to maintain that. So our plan really is, you know, those trees will be in the rear, the very rear of everyone's yards, so our plan really is to leave those, leave those trees, as many of those trees in the existing state as it really, as they are today. You know, as far as runoff and traffic is concerned, those are always, you know, typical questions that residents get. One thing I can assure you on is, you know, our design is intended to be better than the current situation and to the city's engineering standards, which they will be reviewing and improving. So if anything, the runoff situation out there should be better than the current situation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mr.
Just as a reminder, the public comment period has been closed, so if you'd like to entertain this gentleman, you'd have to reopen it.
Come ahead, go ahead.
Just make a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion that we open a public hearing.
My name is Paul Cook. I live at 58, oh, I'm sorry.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a secondary, reopen the public hearing. Ms. Sim, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt this. I just kind of disagreed with what this gentleman's, oh, my name.
Need your name, address?
Okay. My name is Paul Cook. I live at 5892 Mount Royal Drive, Clayton, Ohio, and my property is buttoned up against this. I've been there 38 years. That's the first house there. And I know when Ryan developers came in and built all that, Bayberry Trail, and we were promised, guaranteed, that they'd were promised, guaranteed, that the developer would maintain all our retention ponds and everything. And we, the neighbors, are doing what the developer promised. My only point is, I would like some kind of provision to hold the developer to what they say. Because Ryan left. Would you agree with that? We have a pipe down there that could needs maintenance, and our neighbors cut the grass. Here we are, holding the bag. We, years ago, had to go to turn, turn to Channel 2 to get the developer to clean the thing up. I would just like, sir, I'm sure you're a man of your word, and I respect that, but I would like some kind of assurance that you build this stuff and you take care of our tree line, that you don't sell it or move off and say, "See ya." That's my only point. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
A second, Mr. Gardner.
All right, Ms. Sim, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So are there members of the Planning Commission here that have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I got one question. So actually, Paul Cook, Paul Cook kind of asked a question that I was going to ask, and I'm big on when, when companies come in and they do a development, and, and they do make promises, but sometime, and it's no fault of theirs, leadership changes. So, so my question is, how can we ensure that some of the things that's going to be maintained are maintained for an indefinite period, as long as that development is there? The other thing is, tree lines, so mature trees, hard to come by, totally understand that. I think there's been some developments that I've seen that those tree, tree lines has been, for lack of a better word, tampered with. So I think that the foreman that's there need to have that conversation or that walkthrough with a, with a yellow X or something on those trees, do not do anything. That's just my take. I'm just asking about how can you accomplish that to meet the resident's request?
Sure, yeah. And so I'll answer both of those. So as far as the maintenance of the open spaces and the utilities, when we are in there, as the developer, we are in charge of the HOA. It is in our best interest to make sure all of that is maintained properly in order to keep consistency across the community, to keep the residents happy, to, you know, make sure that the homes are selling in there. There is a point at which we exit the community where all the homes are sold, and that HOA is then turned over to the residents, and the residents then are running the HOA. We, as the developer, we, their annual dues, residents' annual dues, go into a fund that then the, the residents themselves are able to maintain and use that, those funds to maintain those improvements in perpetuity. You know, as the developer, we fund that HOA upfront in order to keep the community looking nice until it is turned over to residents. But that final board of residents is voted on by its own residents. As far as the trees, we definitely would be open to working with the city and finding a way to identify mature trees out there and make sure that the impact of that tree line is as minimal as possible.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second to either recommend approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval of the applicant's request.
I'd like to make a motion for approval with conditions. Those conditions to ensure the tree line is looked at and observed to maintain as much as possible without affecting the development or the residents.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, with the approval of the, the conditions of the city of Clayton, the 23 items.
So you've amended, amended the, the motion here. So the motion is approval and the condition that the developer worked closely with the city on the tree, maintenance of the tree line, and amended this to include the 23 items in, in the final development plan. So I guess that's the motion at this point. Is there a second?
I second the motion to approve based upon the 23 amendments that have been suggested by the staff of city of Clayton.
And the maintenance of the tree line?
I am not including the maintenance of the tree line.
So you've, so, so we don't have a second for the initial motion?
He seconded, but he included, he included the 23, which I think is a good idea.
Okay. You did?
You did.
Right. Put the tree line and the 23 items with the city of Clayton.
What I would recommend is Mr. Robinson reword his motion to include both the tree conservation area and the 23 items, and then see if we can get a second on that.
I make a motion that we approve with the following conditions: to maintain the tree line as much as possible without impacts to the development or the, the current residents, and to include the 23 recommendations by the city of Clayton.
All right, now we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Gardner, second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Sims, please call the roll.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
I believe that completes our agenda for the night. We entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Gardner.
Is there a reason to formally vote on adjournment?
Wouldn't need to be a roll call, it could just be a.
Okay, Ms. Sim?
Voice vote.
Mr. Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.